And then moving on to correspondence and recognition, good news. Included in our packet was the New York State Scholar-Athlete Award winners for the 2015 season and among the qualifying teams, which must have a cumulative average of ninety percent or higher, the following teams qualified, and that was to give recognition to golf, football, girls tennis, girls cross country, boys cross country, girls volleyball, boys volleyball, boys soccer, girls soccer, girls swimming and diving, cheerleading. So congratulations to all those teams. It's outstanding to have that many teams and those many students achieve that three-point average. Along with the good news, we have two students from Parkness Program chosen for the November Student of the Month. Kyle Moore, if he's here this evening, was in or is in the digital media program, and he has emerged as a leader in that program, and he was recommended for that. Also Zachary, anyone like to help me pronounce that name? Messier? Is the cybersecurity program. He was chosen by Mr. McNamara, and he just wanted to share that information for the two students of the month. So congratulations to both students. Public comment? And then moving on to curriculum and instruction.
Great, thank you so very much. Just two items for this evening's presentation. The first is for information with regard to the course catalogues being operated at high schools for the coming year. We have a couple of different changes. Primarily within the MAF department, we are looking to discontinue college calculus course, but add pre-calculus and advanced topics course. This is reflective of the New York State standards changes in the past, among recent standards prior to the four little standards, we have algebra true slash trigonometry class. With the more recent college commerce standards, trigonometry really drops out of that course, it truly comes to algebra two course and advanced topics. So when we were looking at having kids go moving from their more recent classes into college, they were missing, they would be missing a lot of trigonometry. So we're looking to add the pre-calculus and advanced topics so that we can create a support system for them, as well as continue to offer them a four-year MAF program. We are also adding a business MAF classroom, which is this presented to the Board of Education with the pathways, which we received notifications from the State Education Department today that we work through. So, very exciting. Microsoft has stayed and is willing to breathe with weathered cell counts to answer any questions that the MAF changes in the department if we may ask any questions. Okay. And then the second item is along the lines of just really good news. We had our librarian at Sidway apply for a scholarship through Scholastic Reading Club, applied for a grant, and she was notified that she would be receiving a $4,000 grant. It's one of four hundred sixty-seven grant applications that were awarded to over twenty, out of twenty-eight thousand applicants. She will be using the money to create experience boxes with the Sidway Primary Library, and those will be books, product packs, some primary source documents, and photographs, all to support a social studies curriculum, which is fabulous because we know that we support social studies and science concepts. We're building a capability for them to help with their literature and opportunities in MAF.
Thank you, Karen. And then moving on to personnel, instructional and non-instructional doctors.
Thank you. We have a handful of appointments. The PI one A, where it says on or about, we know that actual date now is January fourth. We knew, we didn't know when we were making our appointment, when that child, when the birth of the child came, but we do in fact know that there. And then just filling in a couple of positions. D is an adjustment. We have an individual that was subbing in the position to which she was subsequently hired, so we need to adjust her start date. Peer coaching and substitute teacher less additions and additions.
So if there's no questions for Dr. Lawrence, a motion to accept PI one, PI two for the personnel and structural, or any other? All in favor? Yes. Karen Six Zero. And then moving on to the non-instructional section.
Thank you. We have one individual who's moving from probationary to a permanent position, and then a posting for hours that, as a result of a bus driver becoming a head bus driver, we had a room that was open, and that position was posted, and that position is being recommended to be filled. And then just changes to our substitute list additions and additions.
Any questions? If I can get a motion for PNI one through PNI three? All in favor? Opposed? Karen Six Zero. And then moving on to technical projects.
Mr. Robinson's here from campus. He has a area where we stand for that project.
Good evening, everybody. Just a brief update on where we stand with the bus garage. We are approaching the finish line. It's well within sight. We are completely wrapped up on the outside of the building. Just a few minor touch-ups with roof flashing. But we've started our interior finishes. The mechanical electrical plumbing systems have, we're probably about seventy-five percent of all of those systems. And then we're starting drywall paint, and we actually started to put some tile in the bathrooms, and plumbing fixtures will be going in here soon, along with finalizing the systems. We'll be meeting here in the next few weeks to formalize with maintenance department on the vehicle service equipment that are going into the service phase. But we're right on schedule, on budget, and everything's going to be good. Any questions?
Give us a speechless, what's good then?
I can tell you, not dealing with this project, I have to commend you all with the two previous analysis that were made in regards to your students, all that were on the honor rule. Being an ex-athlete and coach, that's very commendable of your district. It speaks great, not only to the superintendent, but to the board as well. And then also with the added item with the library, coming from a family of two principals and a former science and social studies teacher. Just the items there within the library have been attached that your staff are applying to those things and actually getting those grants, which is commendable to the vision. I'm actually very happy to be in this vision, working on this project.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you.
Very.
And then moving on, right, finance. Sorry, I don't publicly stand this coming out, finance.
Hey, I should have been able to step out of order. Just a second here. We have another individual, very certain, also you know, is Brad here. So, who'd like to talk about the naming committee and where we stand with it now, or in the foreseeable future, and seeing where it's on the floor, and what kind of meetings, so. Right.
I see so many friends here. I've been privileged with the opportunity to serve on this naming committee. We got a pretty good start. We sort of stalled when Joe left, and we're getting going again because Robert here. And I think the privilege toward me comes to the fact that I graduated as one of the first graduating classes from Grand Island High School. I have three children that have all graduated from Grand Island High School. I have one granddaughter that has graduated from Grand Island High School. I have three grandchildren that are in this school system, and a fourth that's on her way. And I think, I've been called a tree hard before, but I think I'm as connected to this community as person, which I'm used to. As a young student in this school system, I was fortunate enough to deal with the music program, the drama program, sports programs. I was pretty much involved in all the different things going on, and academics was last on my list then. And we don't even like to look back at those grades or at those things. So serving on this committee was enjoying. I actually asked beyond it, because I had in the back of my mind that the people that so touched my life as a student, the Pink House, from the time I was in fourth grade, the time I graduated, I felt that they deserved to be here, and I thought that they're helping out the committee, and that maybe I could, you know, help get the right people on the right list. So, as a committee, we were formed, we reset. We sat down, and we started talking about different ideas. We had the football field was on the list, the athletic field was on the list, but I had Mr. Myers for Jim, when I was taking him as the airport. So, and I had G for Jim classes all the way through. So, it was, it was as if those two had already been programmed. We didn't really have to think about those very much. And we got to the theme, the auditory, what are we going to do with that? We had ideas that went from the Pink House through various other people. We have people involved in the music program right now that have done such a significant job, that you can't leave the auditory event for somebody that's in there every day, but you think about the future of the naming process. And I heard the, I heard the word one. Somebody said, well, we could call it the William Varian Pink House Auditorium. And that was right down the road that I was headed. And one came out, and I stopped, we just ran the ratings. And so, we said, what would be the point of leaving the auditory event? There are two people that contributed so significantly to the future of music programs, and we're going to call it one. So we sat, and you can help you remember who this student was, you know, student that was seventh or senior from the baseball.
Oh, Zoe. Yes, and it was Zoe.
It was Zoe. And it was rampant conversation around the table. Everybody sort of agreed that we didn't want to give it all up or whatever. And there was other suggestions, it wasn't that. And Zoe came up with brand, like a, yeah. And it came out of her mouth, and we all just sort of stopped. And we all sort of agreed that that's on the grid, you know? And it sort of took over the pain that I was feeling toward calling the auditory the one. So I said, we all stepped in and added it to our work. So from that point on, then we had Jim, because now we have William Varian Pink House, who contributed significantly to the music programs, in a way that you need to recognize at some point. But, are we going to do that? Now, the names are coming up, and the things are coming up. And even if we dig the football field that she masters, or the sports stuff like Xavier named H. David Myers, who's still very much with us, that he did his thing here, nobody knows who H. David Myers is. You see the name on the archway, or you see the name on the football field for Jim Masters. And I don't know where the suggestion for the wall of honor, or we talked about making plaques, and putting them out in the halls, recognizing different people who they contribute in different ways. But even, even that seemed, because I think we've all seen plaques, and then there's plaques, and then there are bronze plaques, and there's more bronze plaques. And someplace, the idea of the wall of honor came out of the discussion. And the idea of having a video screen, and frame that's classy, you know, we could probably reference a man, you know, and, and maybe some plaques, or some way to put names on this wall of honor. And then a way that we could present the stories of the people that participated in that special way. And then you think about the students in the audiovisual department, that's what you call them, you know? Music column, music column was whatever, there was some kind of nerd, I don't know. They all surpassed us, really. They just took over. So, we thought about involving students in the program. So, let's, let's just say that at the moment that the wall of honor was presented to discuss, it was sort of like the name, brand, like a, it sort of, it made sense. So, from my perspective, that, that has to be our focus. Now, your little, I gave out couples of, some emails and pictures, but in those, in those sheets, you'll see the place where we'd like to see it go, which is out here right around the corner. And even, even the plaque, or the signs that are on that wall right now, can be, I think shifted around in a way that it won't be effective. It doesn't have to be removed, removed, or whatever, we could probably work around it. Even the information board that's there could actually be presented on the video screen. So the video screen could provide multiple things. But when there's a performance, or the auditory is being used for things, I think that one of the other pieces that came out of discussions was that, wait, this could be inspirational. And that just snapped, that sort of like sank right in. And I think that that's absolutely true. Whether remembering William Varian Pink House, because that's a good story, and should be told. And told in a way that I know that I can get his daughter to work out, and I've got some of the, and ensure that for the people that were named, we've got Joe Chamedo was named, Joe Roy's name, you know, there's been a lot of people that have really contributed significantly to the school as a whole. Oh, one of the people on the floor said, I work at Charlotte Sidway, and nobody knows who Charlotte Sidway is. Was that how you say it?
Yeah.
And I might know who Charlotte Sidway was, because I remember the Sidway home stadium was dumb. I don't remember seeing it, but I remember stories of it. And what better place to put it? Veronica Connor. People that have, you know, touched my life as a young boy, but in reality need to be recognized. And this could be a perfect place to do it. Then somebody suggested we could actually stream these videos on the Mr. Clarkson. That makes complete sense, because not ultimately, anybody in the world that wants to come to Grand Island, or thinks about Grand Island as a place to live, could see how we are honoring the past and the people, and it allows us to grow. Robert mentioned in the last meeting that there's somebody in this town that just got under by Sweet Home by School. Not their wall of honor. So I never even thought about it. People would move forward like that. Yes, we need to be in the transportation facility, the tagway, but people that have come onto the stage, it's our naming circuits, or some of those were involved in the science department. So that's a way that you could incorporate all of this into this package. So, I'm ready to do what I can to help finalize this. We're going to have, we need some more members. So if there's anybody in the community that wants to sit on this committee, we're down on four members. One moved about, people just decided they accomplished their goal, they're ready to move on. So, if anybody's interested in saying, I just, we'd like to go to press release stage with this. I'd love to get you to know exactly what we have in mind, but we really need to be able to say, oh, there's the wall. This is what we're going to do. And with your approval, we can move forward on it. So, that's my, if you have questions, I'd be like the... Okay?
Okay, to continue the rest of the finance portion of the board, and we have our normal faculty patch report, tech board, this is our obsolete equipment that we are disposing out. The equipment is, they are, it's a little cracked, because I'm talking to leaders, and those who have since they were nine over five in the town was waiting for it. So, it's a work that has to be there for us, but disposed of themselves. We'd like to make sure for those three of the boards. And then, as we see, it's our budget calendar. The budget calendar basically, which is a calendar that we would like to work with and under to develop our budget for the following year. Really quickly, with respect to that the government will release this same budget sometime around January twenty-third. We did want to, within the medical presentation on the twenty-fifth, because with the travel, so the best date is February eighth to make our first presentation of the sharing budget, but I'm very certain this will intend it, and very weekly, information to our board to express as to where the standard things of course are looking to be. But you will know from February eighth that for, three months prior, we will have support to every administrator here, and we will have a touch to every portion of the seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet here at Grand Island to see what we need for budgetary concerns for next year and three, five, six years out. And all of that will come together on February eighth. There are going to be numerous things. We're not going to get a Florida law, but we will at least try to prioritize everything that we receive from administrators and supervisors, and then deliver that to board on February eighth. And then it's just a monthly process, and so you get to our April nineteenth adoption. We need a process of referral. I know I've spoken to a couple of the administrators and supervisors, this is something new for them, that they actually want to participate in. I think the most important part is that we'll all sit together in like a war room before we come to, you know, February eighth, and we will hash out the prior, priority of what we feel we best for us based on the amount of available money that we have. So, I hope this is thorough, necessary, before this information being submitted, and there's work, there's a budget.
Just one quick question. Do we normally meet before, I think, in the February? It seems early to me, but I couldn't really recall, and it seems that we usually are more...
We have a meeting on the twenty-first, September, January?
No, I was wondering, particularly, do we start earlier, and why does it process or is it always the first weekend?
Well, if, go ahead. My thought is, we could give your presentation on January twenty-fifth, but really, it would be a lot of guessing.
My question is, if you might wait another minute. It'd be nice to have that compilation of everybody's wants and needs before February. It's, it's a lot of information for us, and, you know, we typically have received that earlier. I mean, we don't, we don't necessarily need to have a report on it, but if it could be included in a fragile, fairly normal, or just out to us.
And that's what I said, that during the superintendent's meetings, you'll, you'll get a copy of, of that list, or at least you'll get a copy of the consultation. But it's going to take a couple, two, three weeks once we get to really iron it out, because you have a lot of vested individuals here, you know, principals and supervisors who think that they're priorities number one. So it won't be a one-day conversation, it's going to be a couple days. So, A, why is this more important than us getting another bus, or another truck, or a social worker, or an ecologist? So, as soon as we can, that's a thorough list for very certain students.
And what categories, like as we did last year, what do you think that we're instructional, non-instructional, safety? And we'll certainly share all of that with you. And again, conversation with the administrators, knowing where we're going in the next handful of years, we will do our recommendation at a hard list, our prioritized list. And then last year, as you did, Morgan Boyen, and if you would use go in a completely different direction, we'll have to entertain that, and we'll come to a financial decision that marries strategic planning and access form.
I just want to make sure that we have that mandate there.
It won't be a rush, you won't have to rush, I think.
Well, I just know that some stuff came out in the last hour when we were trying to, from all the board numbers, and I just want to make sure that we are all prepared, and we have enough time to talk about ourselves, as well as our priorities ourselves. I understand that we don't necessarily need a meeting as early as you could decide to mention, but great.
Other conversations, I think, you know, part of what we do is, we have these conversations that is not that, you know, you know, trust what we say. It's, you have them every day, and then when we sit down, you know, we process some process longer than others, and in different manners. So, it just makes it, I think, a little bit more simple than others.
We will, we will try to get it to you before January, at least you have a few different things.
Well, my question is, and I'm going to get the, the name ones. I turned this back on, and I was going to keep that. We have the survey, building and ground survey, am I using the right?
Building condition survey.
Building condition survey. My understanding is underway.
It has started.
It has started.
It will be due sometime, but the, not the massive one that we're looking for, but the one that aligns satisfied state rights. We should have that one done by January thirty-first. And part of Jim's job, Jim Rosser's job, is to take what we have from that survey, and anything that's perfect for this year, it could be part of his wish for this year, and then it will get consumed with all the other requests, and we will, prior questions.
Is your feeling that we'll be able to see that, the report that comes out, at least the one for the state, as we're going through this budget process? I just didn't know what, what would the time is.
It has to be part of the process. What I would probably say is, the things that are really, really important, we can't cover in a technical project, that we still have Phase Three that will be starting by the end of the summer, or that we can't fit in our budgetary process for this year, for twenty fifteen, sixteen, that will definitely come to our surface during this process. Because you have to know, we need to consider all of that, so that we can say, okay, if we can't get this, then why can't we? Because we have all of these others. But then it still has to fit in some type of timeline before we want to move on.
I have a question on the claim, Robin, the one that said, why did it take so long to pay this invoice, PO dated seven one three two, invoice dated seven six, approved in the east one one, payment not so a lot of the others? And the response was invoices were paid as soon as we could receive them. Well, what happened in those four months?
I would have to research exactly which one it is, but I'm very certain that we didn't have received it, we didn't pay it. So we may have put a PO in the system.
But it said, again, it's invoice dated like five days after, and then it approved almost later, but payment was not made until four months later.
We could have an invoice date the day after we have a PO, but if we don't get it in-house, we're not going to pay it. So I would figure that that's something, and unfortunately, maybe they never thought they'd be able to sue us, but we never received it, and the money's still encumbered, but we won't pay it until we get actual receipt of the actual invoice.
And it's for the New York State Music Association, so it could have been that we anticipated something that would come much, much later. So it wasn't as if we were lagging into the work, just pay for it prepaid, if you will, and wait until they done happen. But we can do specific, I guess that's why I was... No, it's a fair question.
Now, short of board, one thing I do know, this is the third district I've worked in in education for fifteen years now. Grand Island is the fastest paying district in the state. Some of the other districts take a fortnight to pay. This is not a concern here.
Any other further questions for Rob? If not, if I can get a motion for Lawrence to move obsolete the board for after all?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Karen Six Zero. And then moving on to the special contribution report.
Good evening. My, it's really short tonight, and I'm just asking for approval to see the SC, 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 recommendations, please.
All in favor? I have a few votes. Karen Six Zero. Thank you. And then moving on to the curriculum.
Thank you. What you have there is, there, it has a cover letter. It is a new policy. The controller did audits, and five audits across New York State were found to be faulty and unacceptable in their practices for potential breaches of student information, as well as, more importantly, that was found in all five of those districts, that if a grade was being changed for a student, there was really no process for record keeping for that. It belonged to the BOSI's Policy Services, and so taking that, that districts across New York State had been found, be in that position, if they drafted a policy, in turn, Karen and Robin looked at that, along with administrators, to say, this is a draft policy, it doesn't fit what we do, what is accurate, what is not. So we made some additional adjustments to include having administrators work collaboratively on a single form, that if a grade was going to be changed, what's the reasoning? What's the rationale? Who are we going to sign off? And where is it that we're going to store it? So it's a, it's a brand-new policy as a means to help provide oversight for data security, and a bit of record keeping. We should be making change of that to students. and a bit of record keeping, we should be making changes to students' grades. It's there for you to review, at our next board meeting, if there aren't any questions, we'd be looking for you without this new policy. Thank you. Any questions?
Moving on to the board educational report, due to board commitments, the Isle, Island, while, the Island, Y, P T A meeting has been changed from April fourteenth to the twenty-fifth, and that has been updated on the website to what the change. Also, the, as also a reminder, the retreat scheduled for January sixteenth has been canceled, and will be rescheduled, hopefully, when we have our new Google services chosen and not was at that meeting, or ready to, to work with, or still in the management, the board superintendent, and send some type of a. Also, just a reminder, the policy twenty-three for me, which is the board self-evaluation, is something that we have to follow up with. We have a policy for it, and everyone has received a paper copy of it. My, my thought was, is that the school board association has one that they've already prepared, and for us to make a copy of it and utilize that document, and everyone can receive a copy, and then the board as a whole can choose a date to have it returned, so we can work on that. And it's also added on here, too, for something for us to develop, hopefully, before the next meeting, is, it is at the discretion of the board, what, and it would make sense to have others who work with us on a regular basis to participate in this review, so to think of people that we would consider to have evaluate us as a group of people to participate in our strength, and we listen, and help, and better work together as a team. So, I guess, a couple things, a date of when, in a timeline of when you would like to achieve this by, if you just pretty much, just for a simple one, and want to take the time to draft up a personal one, we can do that, we do well at that, thanks to Karen, but I think the one that this board has adopted is perfect also. And then, to at least get a handful of people that, or ways, that the, you know, community, you know, cabinet members, the superintendent can fill this out, to participate in this also.
What could you have on the board, one you have, or you have already?
No, we have paper, Janet, I think it was the paper copies, but did we, was it posted to the doc also? I can't remember if that one was also posted to the doc. I, I can't remember, I know, it was a while back, I think, paper copies, everyone received when we first realized that this was something that we needed to address, so, probably, yeah.
We can, I'll get, she, she can scan it and even put it up on the doc, too.
Yeah. Yeah, big a day, a timeframe, and.
I'm just going to talk really loud. I'm somewhat inspired by P K, who wrote, and their incredible success with doing a survey of the community, getting some feedback. Maybe we can consider if, if we knew this tool, if there were questions of this tool could be used to kind of put out to our own kind of community, and that would be a way to be able to give us anonymous and quick feedback, another way that this would really take it.
Especially now that we're televised, we know that, that everyone's watching our program, and it's jumped from like two percent to ninety-five. It's a bad, my, my, along that line, too, is maybe the, the people that do regularly show up to, we can also work heavily up to, but give it some thought, and then hopefully, at our next board meeting, we can have more of a discussion, but I thought I'd just, kind of, as a reminder, bring that and put it out there. And then, the public comment session, Janet, is there anyone? No? And then, moving on to the committee of the whole items and the roundtable, I'll start with Karen.
Nothing, it seems, nothing. Rich?
No. Nothing. No, I signed the full house over yesterday, to make the depth of what I need to. Cheryl, I think you probably had your system come out of the backup, out here, and take that over. They do, in the three businesses involved, and it ran, suppose we agree, you would never get, this was the first one, and then a former, a colleague, a former, a former district, she probably had that, and she, she was, she was, she was very, so, convinced, successful, clearly, to me, where it's, okay.
After yours. To tag on to the deck that we had, between forty and fifty students make it to state, so they are advancing on, it is music, technology, and business is cornerstone to this district, and our students, it's kind of like tech wars, they don't win, they sweep, they are talented, and they report, so that's exciting. Second thing is, we did today receive notification that the, that our application for technical endorsement on our high school diploma for multiple pathways into graduation was approved. That is an enormous testimony to collaboration, division, and to think that we would do a submission to the state the first time, and have it come back with no comments, no adjustments, no tweaking, well, that's not the case in all of the districts, so it's a testimony to the thoughtfulness of the process, and that it's certainly something that we should be immensely proud to offer to our students, and that the board supported, so we appreciate you for that.